Mayor, I pledge, led by Councilmember Sarah Leeland.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, thank you for bringing us here. Please guide us to make the best choices for our citizens and the city of Goddard. Amen.
Okay.
Since we don't have microphones.
Is the soundboard off?
Yeah, is that on? Okay. And we will try and speak louder since we haven't got a chance to get the microphones picked up yet.
We need to amend the agenda to include item H1A Lions Club presentation and funding request, and item H9 Resolution Regarding IRB Series 2022A Goddard Sports LLC.
Do we need to also do anything with the executive session order, or are we finding a way where we're at?
We'll break it up when we get there.
Okay. All right, with those changes made, are we good?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I have motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Brent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Citizen comments. Item D, is there anybody in the audience that would like to say a few words?
Dr. Zimmerman, Six South, in Goddard. Mayor of council. It was approximately two months ago, the city council members, Larkin and Leeland, dislued two other members of the council, the changes needed to be made in our city. Larkin and Leeland, feeling that their need for more power over budget was not being met, decided firing the city administrator was the only way to gain that power. Convincing two other members of the council that it was a matter of bits of ordination, their power grab began. To gain as much power as possible, Larkin convinced three other council members that he was the only one that had enough knowledge and clout in the state house to give the lieutenant governor to be sympathetic to our star bond situation. Now wanting Park City to get star bond money for their proposal project, convinced three other members of the council to let him take me as mayor because of his connections at state level. In my tenure as mayor before the power grab, I had the city attorney arrange a meeting with the people, the lieutenant governor, and Mr. Norris from the state department, Goddard's city attorney, Goddard's city administrator, and myself as mayor, to discuss the situation and concerns. It was my feeling that if we had legal advice, and some of the knowledge of star bond history, and someone representing the citizens of Goddard, it would be our best chance for possibly gaining state cooperation. Larkin insisted the only way to get things done is to go to Topeka and corner some of the legislators and have them put pressure on the lieutenant governor to decide to Goddard. After taking over as mayor, Larkin and the city attorney, Ryan Pack, went to Topeka, were unsuccessful in negotiations, and demands to stop the project in Park City. They then attended the city council meeting in Park City where they attempted to tell the council in Park City how to run their city, and that it was unethical for them to continue to pursue their star bond project because of the close vicinity of the clandestine ball of diamonds to Goddard ball fields. After not having any success in Topeka or Park City, Larkin deployed a saying, "If the lieutenant governors of Park City don't like Goddard's complaints, well, they can just stick it where the sun don't shine," according to AOL News. In my 23 years of serving as representative of the people of Goddard, it was a priority in mind to always be respectful to other cities and state officials. Having a good relationship with both state and local governments only shows our integrity and good judgment to others. After working for 23 years to help our city be respected by the state as well as other cities, it was incredibly disheartening to see that trust and reputation destroyed by a poor leadership in less than two months. Now, as mayor and council, do you actually believe that the citizens of Goddard should trust you and your leadership abilities?
Thank you. Thanks, Larry. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, my name is Melissa Silver, and I lived in the home just north of the property in question at 321 North Pine. My first concern is Oak Street Elementary School at the end of the street. Pine is a bus staging street, and if there are any parked cars on the street, it'll be an extremely dangerous situation for young kids walking home and parents walking to meet their kids. There are no sidewalks on any of the streets there. As you can see by my photos, there's a lot of bus traffic in front of our homes in the afternoon. This will be a three-bedroom duplex with only a single-car garage per unit with a single-car driveway. Chances are good that the renters would have more than one car, which would necessitate cars parking on the street in the same area that the buses stage. As you can also see by the photo, there's no room for cars and still allow buses to follow their normal routine. My second concern is the wildlife I protect. While some people might not appreciate trying to protect and feed wildlife, it is very important to me. My yard has been certified, Kansas Certified Wildlife Habitat. With a house that close to my property line, there will be significant interruptions to the nesting, feeding habits of birds, butterflies, bees that I feed, water, and house in my yard. My third concern is the distance between the duplex and my house. As you can see by the photo, there will be six feet between the duplex and my property line. I know this may be within the regulations, but the nice thing about living in Goddard city limits is the spacing between our homes. The block has single-family homes with yards and a lot of space between the dwellings and the property lines. This duplex will almost go from property line to property line with no front yard. It will look out of place in that neighborhood. I stated in the January 9th meeting that my neighbor tried to purchase this lot around eight years ago, but was told the property was too small to build even a garage on. He has since moved and was not able to be here to back that up. In eight years, it has gone from being too small to build anything on to being rezoned to a multifamily. If it was too small to build a single-family residence and the lot hasn't grown, how can it be rezoned to a multifamily? One additional point as to the small size of this lot, if you look at the one drawing showing the lot is 50-foot wide, you will see the structure will be 38 feet wide, leaving the width of each side at 19 feet, counting the thickness of the walls. And I'm asking you to reconsider the decision and not rezone this lot to a multifamily.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Louise Hyke, hiatuses, 2300, South Bend, South Bend, South Bend. I would like to express that I support our current council members. You may not know what the future looks like, but we do know what happened in the past. It was the past council members that didn't want Marie's Meadows addition in the city limits, causing me not to be able to vote. Myself and others have been wanting different restaurant options. This has been a wish long before this current council members. I guess what I'm saying is council, past council members are not perfect either. I might be a minority, but I hope that I'm the silent majority that wants to see you succeed. Positive changes are needed in Goddard, and I hope these current council members are the ones to do it. May God be with you on the decisions you need to make. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Jeffrey.
All right. Excuse the voice tonight, we've got a bit of ronkaidis going. Jeffrey Jones, and that's 1069 Arwood Creek. Different tone tonight, folks, I'm sure everyone will appreciate that. I have a question about an article that I read in the Eagle a couple weeks ago. Bridger, that's coming in on Maple, is also building at Central and 135th. A what? Bridger. Oh, a Bridger, okay. I don't know what the name of their community is, but they're planning to bring in 300 high-end duplexes and unspecified number of single-family homes, which is great for Wichita. But when I looked at the Goddard school district, that falls in our school district. So, in the next three to five years, we're going to be doubling our population. Just Goddard, are we looking at considering what's going on in our school district? Because if we're going to get up to 10,000, I'm assuming there's going to be a couple of kids involved. If they're getting ready to build 300 high-end duplexes and an undisclosed amount of single-family homes that will border on three sides to kind of buffer kind of what they're doing over at 167th and 23rd, how many more people are we involving in our school district? Does the council meet with the school board, with the planning commission, to look at this? Because if we're going to need more schools, those don't get built overnight. So, that's my concern, is when I talk to teachers and principals and stuff, they're like, "We're kind of where we are. We can't add too many more." And so, that would be my concern, and my worry, that we're going to explode and we're going to overload our education system. So, food for thought.
I can actually speak to that, Jeffrey.
Oh, awesome.
I did meet with Dane Backsa, as well as our superintendent, and there was a study done in '21 with the housing information we had at the time, as well as nationwide information, kind of studying the effects that COVID had, the other factors. And we're actually, we peaked, and currently, birth rates are dropping. So, with that, as well as the aging in place that's happening in a lot of communities, where, like our community, people aren't necessarily moving out, they're staying once their kids are out of the school district. So, with those things combined, they're not necessarily, they're not, we're not going to outgrow what we have. There is room, and they've actually talked, so four of our five K-4s have the early childhood development in them. What they're looking at doing is actually building a centralized, and then this is very early stages, like, just like all these plots are in very early stages, you know, it's not going to be built in a day. So, the childhood center would take those classrooms, and then there would be more classroom space in each of our existing elementary schools. So, that would be the first step, and then the second step would be to build a six K-4. Our enrollment between, where did it go? Our enrollment changed, so we lost 60 online students and gained 70 in-classroom students in the last year. So, it actually only changed 10 students, when you look at the big picture. So, we have, I've discussed that with them. Micah provided some additional information regarding the developments that are coming online, what the lot makeup is going to be, single-family, double-family, all of that, so that we can keep those lines of communication open, because even though we are separate entities, we're still the same community.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we have, we are making sure to address that. I know at the state of the district, I saw Hunter there, I saw Keaton there, I saw Russ and his wife there. I had to leave early, my parents got in a car wreck. They're fine, but that's beside the point. So, that is something that we're trying to work more cohesively with the school district than has happened in the past.
No, I'm sorry.
No, you're right.
So, is that Bridger property, will that be in Goddard schools? Does anyone? You're talking about, Jeffrey, you're talking about the one north of Maple, right? No, I'm talking Central. Central and 135th. It's 133 acres, I don't know if that's all going to be Goddard, or if it'll be half Goddard, half Mays. I, to be honest with you, I'm not on the school board, so.
I don't know what that.
I just didn't know, because to me, that just seems like an awful lot of people. One thing, one, I guess one point that I want to bring up about the school district, city of Wichita, city of Goddard, is Goddard school district now mainly has grown as part of, really Wichita. A vast majority of their students are from Wichita. And so, if you look at that development, I believe you're talking about is also 135th and Central, right? 300 people showed up, too. That's a great example, actually, and that's one thing I want to bring up, is because that should be an example for future developments to Goddard. Because the city of Goddard has the ability to have a protective overlay, we can say, we only want 40% or a certain percentage, we want it to have more trees, we want it to be covered more. If we were to allow the counties to do what they just shown that they're going to do, they're going to do 100% duplexes, no matter what, doesn't matter if 300 people show up or not. And so, we, as a city, have the ability to manage that and control it better than what the county and the city of Wichita are willing to do, apparently. And so, that duplex conversation, that should be a huge point for the city when we consider something, is to say, "Well, if we don't want them here, they're still going to be there. It's just the county or the city of Wichita is going to take them over." And it's still going to affect the school. They're still going to be going into school. So, that's a perspective that you have to look at from the city's standpoint, of saying, "I can take the concerns of my people, and we can put a restrictive overlay on it, have only 40%, and make sure that it looks nicer and whatnot." Okay, well, is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Travis Bryant, 19, Shenandoah. Tried to like talk a little bit last time, and I think this time it's officially on January page seven. I'm a little disappointed, it appears that we have just caved in and decided we were going to go RFP, a outside agency for our city administrator, which, you know, I agree, it comes to a point when you're looking to hire somebody that you need to do that, but we haven't even taken the first steps of posting the job, looking internally, putting it on LinkedIn, and at least tried. Because I know you're looking at $140,000 salary-ish, it's going to cost the city about $50,000 for a Hunter. Seems like a lot of money just to throw out there before we even give ourselves an effort, right? Put it out there, put it on LinkedIn, see who's in there, see maybe somebody in the city of Wichita is looking to move up, or some smaller city. So, I'm a little disappointed we haven't spent over a month that we've done this, and we still have no posting for this job. And now, we're looking at 30 days to hire a headhunter, 30 days for them to even hire for somebody, another 30 days to do interviewing, so you're talking four months for somebody to get some work. So, we're going to be six months past a fire before we get somebody in. And it seems like we're just giving in and not wanting to try ourselves, and I think we should do better as a council. So, thank you, appreciate it.
Anybody else? Going once, going twice? So, move on. All right. Item E1, want me to the library or?
We have a library board appointment. Megan, are you here?
We just got done, sorry. So, she was at our board meeting.
Okay, no worries. Want me to?
Is there a, is that a field?
Sherry's on her way, so I don't know if you want to speak.
Do we want?
We'll move forward.
And then we can jump back.
And we need to jump back.
Do I need to make a motion to move forward and jump back? Nope? Okay.
We'll go to the consent agenda.
Do I have any questions on the consent agenda? Brent, can you run?
No.
Good.
I make a motion on the through the consent agenda?
Motion by Brent.
Second.
Second by Keaton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item H1. It's Dan the man's turn. I was supposed to be kind of funny, you know?
I just want to call him Carl.
You want to call him what?
Carl.
I did that once. The first point of your agenda is the library park area. That was donated to the Goddard Lions Club, we're paying the taxes on that property about five years ago. Two boy scouts did part of the project of actually building the park, and Lions Club provided some of the funding, they also provided some of the funding themselves. It was our understanding from the city at that time that they would take that park over as soon as it was completed. I turned paperwork in three years ago, and I'm here now to try to get it finished up, because it, I've been required to do the same paperwork twice, so. We have the paperwork, the taxes were not paid last year, because Lions Club has refused to pay them, with the condition that we've asked for three years to feed us on the agenda, and why should we pay $250 every year to pay taxes? Or something we understood was going to be taken care of three years ago. Well, I'm all in favor, so. I, Dan got me all the paperwork at the day of the pancake feed, and so, I think it only makes sense to, we're maintaining it anyways. Yeah, you're maintaining it. That's part of the agreement. Do we have to make a motion? Just make a motion to accept the donation. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept the donation of the Pocket Park League.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Brent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we need to do anything about the property taxes?
We'll have to figure that out. That was news. That's news. The current property taxes? We paid for three years. Okay, okay, well, I'll get back to you. Okay. Not a problem. You have another agenda item on there called H1A. The Goddard Lions Club is a community service organization, they have served the Goddard community for 66 years. Next, please. Why I became a Lion, I think is pretty important, because I came here in 1976, and I was a fourth grade teacher when Oak Street was tearing down, or was then PLC was tearing down a three-story building and putting vision on. I remember riding the bus to Central Rivers with my students and staying over there with classes for the first six months, and we finally got into the building completely in there at that time. The reason I got into it was because of vision, youth, disaster relief, humanitarian, disaster relief, got that under twice, diabetes, hunger, environment, and childhood cancer, which were all areas that we strongly believe in. And, next, please. Our motto is, "We serve." We're there, we're need, we're there because we're Lions. Go ahead, next. Next. Did you know, and here's a summary of our club's history, next, please. We're the largest service organization in the world, 1.4 million, we're also in 212 countries, including China. We're the only service organization in that area. Our core areas are there listed for you to see. Where there's need, there's Lion, and we do 22 service projects in our community, now going to be 24 this year. Next. And here are the 22 service projects we do. We've put into about, this community, about $100,000 a year through mint and tree donations, vision, eyes exams, glasses, the Goddard Public Library, which we donated $5,000 to their bookmobile, and also pay for the William Allen Books every year. We have a girl durable medical equipment that we use and check out through the library, it's free of charge. We do the fireworks show, we actually shoot it off. The purchase of trees and planting, we have a Leo's Club, that is a youth organization that we sponsor. Goddard Food Pantry, left shoe, we gave them $3,000 on top, and giving them all the food we had left over from Mint Tree, which is about three pallets. Blessing boxes, we have four soon to have five, those are boxes that food is kept in, and we filled them up yesterday completely, the day before yesterday. Try to be a little careful about making sure that they're always full at the same time. Yellow dot program is a program where police officers can identify a yellow dot on the outback of a car and understand that that person may have a medical issue, look in their tab of their car, or blood box of their car. Recycling program, we brought in, right at five inches in the community already, recycling. That's right at 25,000 pounds of plastic that I call the dillens. Have some young men that like to play around with plastic, so they get to jump and play, and jump and push, and everything else. Local disaster for homes, anytime of home, and we had one out here east of town that we gave $500 to the person who lost a home from fire. We give STEM students the Lions State Band, which is every year, we give college scholarships. This year, we're giving two $1,000 scholarships, one to Goddard High School and one to Eisenhower High School. We give fruit baskets for the widows, widows, and seniors. Of course, the Pocket Park at the library, and Neighbors United. Bus stop shelters were built at, two at Regency, which is down, I'm not sure if I'm right, 167 Kellogg and the one of Maple, we put in those bus shelters. Christmas on Main Street, we've helped that with, that turns into Thanksgiving feast for the community. We do that on the second Thursday of November. William Allen Lightbooks, I already talked about, and the round tables that we donated to the community center. Next, please. We also put a sign up that says, "Welcome to Goddard," over a sign that's been there for years, it just looked pretty trashy, and no. years, it just looked pretty trashy, and no one claimed it, so we claimed it until it gets removed. You know, sometimes you just do things and end up doing it. People serve in our community, last year was twenty-one thousand five hundred and seventeen people. You sit on that, says, well, how can you serve that many? Well, that's different times you serve them. Thirty-three service activities, volunteer hours are three thousand six hundred and forty-one. Funds donated at best point were sixty-nine thousand, and funds raised was twenty-three thousand five hundred and forty dollars. That was actual fundraising, the rest of it was donations or things like that. Next, please. Of course, we've talked about the library and the ELMS kits, William Allen White Book collections, and the Pocket Park, next. Durable medical equipment, and I want everybody to understand, it's free of charge, you can check it out as long as you want. Just come and get it. If you have stuff that you wanna give us, let the library know, and they call me, and I come up and I evaluate it. If we have too much of it, we take it to Medical Services Bureau of Wichita, because we have a big trade-off program. We need something they change out, and they help us out with some of the things we need. Footseats, crutches, handicap, bathroom accessories. Next. I'm gonna show you a little bit about the spot camera, I didn't bring one tonight, but it actually takes a picture of, for instance, Sarah. You can take a picture of Sarah's eyes in less than thirty seconds and tell that student or actually would know that they need to go to the eye doctor. And so we've done it at all Catholic schools in the area, plus all the Goddard students have been tested by the school nurses. The school was so impressed that they went and bought three more machines last year. That's an eight thousand dollar machine. We collect used glasses and give sight to third-world countries. Last year we had a hundred and ninety-five thousand glasses collected in the state of Kansas and shipped off to rural countries. And they're all taking it. This is one of the reports from the screening camera, and like I said, it's very easy to do, anybody can do it, walk up, click the face, even with autistic children who are rolling around on the floor, you just give them six still for one second, you got it. And this would show the defect, the eye, and lens caused by deviation of this curvature, so it causes maybe students to see something that's too large or too small. Next, please. We also support the senior popu, oops. The Blessing Boxes at Mint Tree. It's unfortunate to say that three or four of those pictures of Lions up there are now gone, either passed away or moved, the clubs have moved, but we served last year a hundred and forty-one families, we served three hundred and seventy-six children in two thousand and twenty-two. That involved giving nine, ten sacks of groceries to them at their, whatever they wanted. We laid it on the table and said, take what you want. We also gave them a turkey, or potatoes, carrots and celery, and gravy, and to make a Thanksgiving meal, and a dessert. Then at Thanksgiving, we gave them the Mint Tree gifts, which usually, by the time you get everything for those gifts, it's usually between one thousand, one hundred and fifteen to two hundred dollars a sack. You may go out as a citizen and take that mint tree off the tree and go buy it, we actually bought two of everything, except for coat or sweater, but if you don't have those things, and we understand that, sometimes you don't have money to spend that much money, we go out and buy it with donations we receive. So every kid has two of everything, two shirts, two underwear, socks, all the stuff that they would need, and as a former teacher, I can tell you, you see the students that walk in that have been in that program, they're smiling on their face when they come back with new clothes. Next. We support the senior population, we give about a hundred and thirty-five fruit baskets out to seniors in the community, and I've already talked about the yellow dot program. I've already talked about the Leos, but helping Goddard Lions advance, supporting youth cancer projects, in fact, tomorrow night they're building, making blankets for the cancer ward, developing. Then the service projects, we do a lot of state and international projects. I am now serving as a state secretary for Kansas Lions, so I get into a lot, but we do a lot with our international association, and anytime that we have a tornado come through this community, I can get on the phone immediately and get ten thousand dollars overnight to bring a trailer in here and support this community. Next, please. We are over Andover. It's very interesting, the first day we were there before anybody else was, except for Red Cross, and they said, we're gonna move in this school. I said, aren't they gonna have school in this school in two days? He looked at me and said, oh, yeah. I says, what's the sense of me unloading all my stuff if they're gonna have to take it back up in two days? So they finally told us to wait a day, and we got into a community center, which was much larger than ours, we took up one-fourth of it, and all the stuff you see on the canopy is the stuff, just part of the stuff that we gave out. There's a real interesting Facebook page, if you ever look on Andover tornado disaster relief, when you get away, you'll find out all the stuff. I'm a terrible person to take pictures, and they followed me around and I had to explain everything we had, but anyway. But we worked very close with Red Cross. How do we support these service projects? We donations, grants, fireworks sales, pancake feed, chili feed, bingo, car show, and partnerships. We partnership with the Chamber for Night Out, Fall Fest, Christmas on Main Street, broad sale days are coming up, and I know the city staff has got five or ten phone calls in the last five days, and I promise it'll be up, and it's up tonight. So even though we're having it the first weekend of May, people need to know right now what they're gonna put in their list, and, man, so I think that's great. They must have a lot of junk in their neighbors that they wanna get rid of. Okay, go ahead. Partnership with Veterans Day and Thanksgiving Feast, last year we served four hundred and thirty-four community members, the meal was free. Fireworks show last year, the city council contributed seven thousand five hundred dollars to the fireworks event, a total of nine thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-three cents expenses, plus eight hundred and nine dollars in in-kind gifts were given. The Lions Club has been shooting off and supporting the fireworks show for twenty-three-plus years with fireworks, entertainment, and food. We've also had partnership, last year it cost about twenty percent more in the cost because of shipping and inflation. The show's cost has not increased in twenty years before that, as far as our asking for contributions to the city. We are requesting a funding increase from eight thousand to eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. This is an increase of one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars from the city's blast there. Lions will also have see an increase in the food we give away at the event, and right now we're expecting an increase of twenty-five percent, nearly seven, six hundred dollars, or nearly six hundred dollars for entertainment and food. Veterans Day, we served like four hundred and thirty-four people. Food and consumer, disposable products have really increased, I didn't know how much since I went to Sam's last year. We are requesting an increase in the city from one thousand five hundred to one thousand nine hundred. Lions also plan to increase their budget from one thousand to one thousand five hundred, plus they plan to work the event. And a new thing, many years ago, the administrative, the activities committee of the city of Goddard used to sponsor the Easter egg hunt, and everybody in that has been calling and talking about, when's the city gonna sponsor the Easter egg hunt? Well, we didn't. And since the community expanded, the community Easter egg hunt has not been held. Lions Club is proposing, in fact, they've already scheduled it, whether you approve the budget or not, that the Lions Club, in joint cooperation with the city, will hold the Easter egg hunt for the cost of one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars on April first during the Goddard Lions car show, and requesting a budget of one thousand three hundred dollars from the city. Basically, our partnership request goes like this for Easter, I already talked you about that, fireworks shows, Thanksgiving feast, and all these community events are provided by the volunteer efforts of the Goddard Lions Club. Are there any questions?
Quick question, do you, Lion, property taxes aren't paid?
They're paid to current, the second half of twenty twenty-two will come due in May. Okay, I think we paid half of it.
Okay, but it's current, not in May.
It's current.
Okay. So we're increasing the total request pretty much.
From nine thousand to twelve thousand.
I think it's important, I think, I've been working with Dan the past several weeks on this, and I think they're gonna put the money to good use, so.
And I'll try to, try to get by with the materials we have.
Eggs are expensive.
Even the plastic ones. I'm glad to see that back, and I think it's cool that you're coordinating, coordinating it with the...
My daughter doesn't think so.
Car show.
She's very angry with me. She says, why are you spacing it out between your age groups? I says, because it takes a little time for the old man to walk from one station to the other.
I, no, I think the Lions Club has been a staple in Goddard for years. Found out a couple weeks ago, you can't show up two minutes late to Bingo, so don't show up two minutes late to Bingo. Yeah, no, that place was packed, that was awesome, so.
Hundred thirteen people.
Yeah, yeah, so, no, I think...
Don't send the fire chief out.
I was gonna say.
Right there. I told the kids in the kitchen, if the fire chief shows up, walk out the back. Hundred eighteen, I think is what we have. We didn't hear any of that. We try very hard to keep, we, we, we volunteer real hard, and unfortunately, a family of five came in the door, right? I'm gonna do that.
Is there any questions, Brent?
We need to make a motion that we extend the twelve thousand.
Motion by, motion by Brent.
Second.
Second by Keating, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Dan. And we're still looking for members, anybody wanna talk about membership, just come
I'm the mayor and city council, this is item H point two, so this is the rezoning case for three-two-one North Pine, case number zone twenty-two dash eight. Look, it does. Okay, here's the background, the land is currently zone R one, single-family residential is around zero point one-six acres. The developer would like to build a duplex, the lot wants to rezone it to R two-two family residential. Lot is currently vacant. If the city council agrees, the rezoning will become official thirty days after publication to the newspaper. Planning Commission tabled the item on January ninth, twenty twenty-three until the next regular planning commission meeting. On February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, the planning commission voted to approve the rezoning request six to one. So this is the thirteen criteria, this is from Article thirteen, section one hundred H point one dash seventeen. This comes from the Golden Rules, it's a famous state case, Arthur Gold versus the City of Golden Park, so after the state ruled on this, every city in the state of Kansas is required to review these, and so we're gonna go through these seventeen parts, and if you have any questions anytime, feel free to interrupt and just say, hey, I have a question about this, but. Number one, what are the existing uses and their character and condition on the subject property in the surrounding neighborhood? So a subject property is classified as residential, high and dust use, which is vacant. Land use to the east is single-family residence detached, to the south the land use is single-family residence detached, to the west the land use is single-family detached, to the north the land use is single-family residence detached. What is the current zoning of the subject property in that of the surrounding neighborhood or in relation to the request? The land is currently zoned R one, single-family residential to the east, the zoning is R one, single-family residential to the south, the zoning is R one, single-family residential to the west, the zoning is R one, and to the north, the land is R one, single-family residential. Is length of time that subject property has remained undeveloped, vacant, as a factor to consideration? Yes. Building permits for new construction tend to follow new developments, areas of older housing stocks tend not to have new economic growth without incentives. Also, as mentioned, one of the citizens mentioned that somebody reached out to buy it, I guess eight years ago before I was here, and they said, the city told them that it was too small. The reason that it was too small is because R one back then was a minimum requirement of seventy-five by a hundred, and the lot is fifty by one forty, so the width was too small. It also had a minimum square footage requirement of eight thousand square feet, right now the square footage is seven thousand, so that's one reason why the city told them, I guess, eight years ago, it was too small to build a single-family detached on. Since then, we've amended R one so that it can have a minimum square footage of six thousand, but that was still a sixty minimum width requirement by a hundred, and the lot width currently is fifty. So in its current zoning, you couldn't build a house on it. That's why we proposed an R two, and that's what the developer is asking for, an R two. Because of R two, it was amended back in twenty nineteen so that you can have a fifty by one hundred, minimum lot width is fifty by one hundred, and so that's why the developer's asking for that rezoning so that he can build on it for those reasons. Now, that was a long, long one, but. Is the length of time of subject property, has remained undeveloped, that's under three? What, the request corrected error in the application of these regulations, so no, there's nothing there, it's vacant, it's not a correction of any interest. Is the request caused by change or changing conditions in the area of subject property? So what is the nature and significance of such change or changing conditions? So yes, the city of Goddard is experiencing significant residential growth and demand for additional housing of all types, and that's something we've seen pretty consistently. Does adequate sewage disposal, water supply, all unnecessary public facilities, including street access exist, or can they be provided to serve the uses that would be permitted on the subject property? So yes, it is a vacant lot, but all the regular public amenities and improvements are embodied in, so you have a paved road, you have sewer, you have water, everything else that would go with it. Would the subject property need to be platted or replatted or remove dedication made for right-of-way easements and access controls or building setback lines? So no, land is already platted, and water is in the city right-of-way by the street, and sewer is in the city right-of-way by the alley. Would a screening plan be necessary for existing and or potential uses for the subject property? So no, screening is required for multifamily or commercial, multifamily is considered three units or greater, that's Article two point one oh two, dwelling multifamily, so that's classification for multifamily in our city subdivision regulations, which can change based on the city, but our subdivision regulations say that a multifamily is three units or greater, this is for two units. Is available vacant land or buildings available or not available for development currently has the same zoning as is requested? So zoning for R two counts for about two hundred and ninety-three acres, including proposed zoning cases, which is about fifteen percent of the residential land. All R two land is in the process of being developed or is currently developed. If the request is for business or industrial uses, are such uses needed to provide more services or employment opportunities? So this is not applied, we're talking about residential only, there's no proposal here for commercial or industrial. Is the subject property suitable for uses in the current zone to which it has been restricted? Actually, yes, R one does allow for duplexes as a conditional use, so conditional uses are acceptable uses with conditions. As mentioned, though, the lot is too small, but it is considered an acceptable land use, they'd have to go through a conditional use permit to get that, but as mentioned, the conditions for an R one were prohibited based on the lot size. To what extent would remove the restrictions, i.e. the approval of zoning request detrimental affect other areas, others in property in the neighborhood? So we did a regression analysis to determine if there was a negative impact on the appraised value of single-family detached properties within one thousand feet of the all-existing duplexes, this was conducted on three hundred and seventy-five properties within Goddard. This is the line fit plot for a single, simple regression analysis, and it's shown to be statistically insignificant. There is no impact on single-family detached residential appraised properties in proximity to a duplex. And I spoke with our residential land analyst, Jack Mannion, who said that they don't take into account duplexes in proximity to single-family detached, and I spoke with private appraisers who said they don't take into account duplexes in proximity to single-family residential when they're private appraisals. Thirteen, with the request consistent with the purpose of zoning district, classification, intent, and purpose of these regulations, so, one oh two, for R two, two-family residential, this district is established to permit medium density two-family dwelling units with both public sewage and water supply, and to allow certain new community facilities, not ten general or single-family residence use, except as incident results in the area. Stat believes this development is in accordance with zoning district purposes. Article one point one oh one, purpose of these regulations as generally specified, serve the following purposes as listed here, A, B, C, D, through K, and stat believes this development is in accordance with the intent and purpose of the subdivision regulations. Is the request in accordance with the comprehensive plan and does occur in enhanced implementation of the plan? So page sixteen, the comprehensive plan, it has a goal to promote continued residential development, to enlarge tax base, and strengthen the municipal capacity to provide quality home facilities. Page seventeen, the comprehensive plan outlines housing objectives included, provided for multifamily dwellings, retirement housing, and other specialized housing as required to meet the needs of defined user groups within the community. Page sixteen, the comprehensive plan, shows future land use of this area as residential. And what is the nature of support or opposition to the request, so general support comes in desire to increase the tax base of the city as well as diversify the housing stock? General opposition comes in desire of city stay relatively unchanged in its land use composition of single-family detached housing in larger lots. Is there any information, are there any recommendations, is request available for professional persons or persons of related expertise would be helpful in this evaluation? Providing rental properties in a traditional form avoids the need for renters to rent single-family detached homes, which are typically considered owner-occupied. Prohibiting renter-occupied dwelling units causes renters to look for renting single-family detached homes as their only rental option available. This causes people actively looking for homeownership to compete with speculators of single-family detached homes, this drives up demand for single-family detached home values, which in turn makes a single-family home more desirable for real estate speculators as an investment opportunity. This causes bidding wars between potential homeowners and real estate speculators further driving up the value of homes. This continued real estate speculation puts your homes out of the goods market into the asset market, causing a housing bubble, which is prone to higher levels of volatility crashes. By comparison, does the relative gain to the public health state or general welfare outweigh the loss of... outweigh the loss of property value, or the hardship imposed upon the applicant by not approving the request? This development is for residential use and does not pose a serious threat to housing to buy its use. We're not proposing a leather tanning shop or, you know, hog farm. This is just for residential. So this map shows a comparison of owner-occupied to renter-occupied. Green is owner-occupied, blue is renter-occupied. What we did is we just took parcel data from the county and we did a comparison of owner property compared to the actual property address to determine if there was potential for rental property, and the blues are the ones that had what I would call conflicting addresses. So the address listed as the site of that parcel and the owner address were not the same. And then the green ones, they were consistently the same. The yellow box is the proposed. This is the school. This is the end of Pine Street with the mobile homes over here on the north end. This is the year bill for all the parcels in that area, as mentioned. We typically don't see as much capitalization of properties in areas generally of an older housing stock. We typically see more value being spent in areas that are of immediate development. So here's the plot plan. As you can see here, it's got twenty-five foot setback, six and six, and then about twenty-six in the back. It's fifty by one forty, so that's seven thousand square feet. This is the concept image that was provided by the developer. Financially, it's a small cost for publication because there would be in ordinance. Legally, it's approved as the form. It is recommended city council waive the reading of the ordinance with a voice vote and approve the rezoning request case zone twenty-two dash eight with a voice plus a roll call. Just caught out with another. Questions, comments?
So how the zoning is now, a single-family home cannot be built on that?
Yeah, it's still too small according to our subdivision regs. We'd have to amend R one to make it so that somebody could actually build it. So minimum lot width is sixty in R one. Right now, the lot width for that lot is fifty.
That seems backwards. You can't build a single-family home, but you can build a multifamily.
Have you rezoned it? I'll leave this reset.
No, I'm not talking about rezoning.
Oh.
Because like this proposed duplex is allowed, but a single-family home.
If it's rezoned, he could still build a single-family home in an R two. The thing is, bulk regulations and the setback requirements, they're dictated and they're kind of arbitrary where they amend from time to time based on the perception of the city and changes over time. So for example, if you look back at like older lots back in like nineteen ten, nineteen twenty, they were like twenty by thirty, twenty by fifty, very small lots. And then over time, as the city grows, they start increasing the lot sizes. And then people start joining lots together to build a house on smaller and smaller lots, and they try to combine them together. So as the city grows, they, they've decided, well, we want to have bigger lots, and so they set it at seventy-five by a hundred. And then as the markets change, and people start proposing having smaller lots, and the city adopts new regulations to be receptive to the market changes, the housing market changes, and then they start reducing the lot sizes to make them smaller, such that you can build on them. But yeah, can it fit? It's, yeah, it can fit, certainly. It's just a matter of not, if it's a technically, you're prohibited from building it. That can physically build it, but are you technically prohibited from building it?
Also, my opinion should build a single-family home.
Right.
I personally am for it. I think I can't do that any more than what Mike has already gave his field out. I think it's important that we service the community with the rhythm. And as you've already shown, we need more of a match for this. I'm a big proponent of it.
I personally am the exact opposite. I'm very against this idea. My wife and I walked over there the other day because we realized we were just one street down. And when I got to this property and looked, I double-checked to make sure we were in the right spot because it's so ridiculously small that the idea of a duplex going there made me, like, like, I actually stopped. I was like, there's no way that's right. And so then I started talking to some of the neighbors. The gentleman that lives next door, his name is Kyle, and he said that he's tried to buy the property multiple times and just, it just didn't time out right. But he wants to eventually buy it and either build on or add like a shop over there or something, which I think something like that makes a lot more sense. Because the idea of building, like Sarah was saying, the idea that, that it's not big enough to put a single-family home was what was originally said a couple of years ago, and now we're going to put two families up against each other. And then also the fact that that entire property is thirty-eight feet across, so we're just going to make a house that's super skinny and super long. I don't think I can get behind that. So that's where I stand on this.
Do you mind if I chime in? I'm the actual developer. If you guys mind. I'm Kirk Richards with K T Properties. I've actually, we've done a lot of these in Wichita. The fifty-foot wide lot is pretty standard in Wichita, and I've actually done one in Goddard that you guys passed for me on four oh one Craig. So I don't know if you've been over four oh one Craig. That was built about five years ago. So I'm really just here to answer any questions and, you know.
Four oh one what?
Four oh one Craig. And, and, and it's on the, you know, I know you guys are talking about rate taxes, you know, we keep very good care of them, and, you know, it's on the tax roll for like two twenty-five when you guys were talking about evaluations. So, I mean, I know in Goddard, there's might be some different, you know, rules on, on lots, but it's pretty standard in, in Wichita. We've been doing a lot of them.
Well, they were wanting to put in value on that lot right now.
Yeah.
So if we were to say no, then what's the next step for you?
I don't know. So, I mean, this will, you know, allow housing that you guys need for Goddard, and it will, the tax roll will be significant. If somebody does buy and build a garage, I mean, it's not going to raise as much, you know.
You're pretty much denied financially. It would, that's probably what it turned into, turning into a garage.
I mean, if somebody would even, you know, buy it and do that, I mean, that's.
Yeah. Well, that's what, that's what the neighbor next to me expressed. He actually said he was just out of town when the purchasing took place, so he wasn't able to, able to jump on that. The other location here that you said you guys had already done one, doesn't have a house on those sides. So I do think it's a little bit different. The, the other side of it is a field.
Well, yeah, but it's still the same fifty-foot wide lot. Yeah, so.
But it's, I mean, it's the same fifty foot wide, but the other side isn't another building. You know what I mean? That's, that's just what I'm noticing.
Yeah.
It's a little bit different situation.
But it's, it also sits on that fifty-foot wide lot. And then also, we do the front doors in the front. We do concrete out all the way from the front door, so there actually is enough parking for two cars on each side. And even though two is plenty for code, you can get one in the garage and two in the park in the driveway, so that relieves some of the other questions that, you know, some of the neighbors have had as well.
Reminds you, guys, that this is actually a project the planning commission voted yes on compared to other ones that they haven't voted yes on.
So, which is a great feat. So. Sarah, Brent?
We had a neighbor show up tonight. He showed up last week, too. So if I have to vote for it, I'm going to vote no.
Well, I guess it's, can you run? Families in the study because you say no to it. Probably not for having families.
That's. I mean, if we say no to it, we lose two families, and we just approved like two hundred.
But you have, but you have already allowed me to do this in the past, and then which is, which is.
I didn't. I wasn't here for that.
Yeah. Well, Goddard it did. Yeah. Then different council and more housing, good tax roll.
Well, do I have a motion to waive the reading at least?
I'll motion to waive the reading of the ordinance.
Okay. Motion by Keating to waive the reading of the ordinance?
I guess my work into it in a second.
When you read, read that ordinance? Can I read the ordinance?
I'll second.
Okay, second. Waive the reading of the ordinance? All on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So I will make the motion to rezon the case, zone number two-two dash eight. I mean, second. Or once, or twice. Another second. Okay. Over and on. Motion denied.
This is item H point three. So this is a letter of support for the A B O D E grant, the abode grant. So quick background, American Rescue Plan, ARPA stimulus package was passed on March eleventh, twenty twenty-one. The stimulus package provides grant opportunities to disabled in L A. They call it ARPA building opportunities for disabled in L A or abode. Rodney Stevens, that we're looking at requesting an abode financing in the form of two million to build a senior multifamily apartment building in the Goddard Genesis Development area or thereabouts. Apartment building, which consists about fifty units, to be marked towards those who qualify senior according to the county after this fifty-five and over. One of the apartments for the abode grant is three letters of support. The support letters attached were drafted by the Fosse Nelly law firm, the developer. An individual reached out to the city on January first, twenty twenty-three to ask about senior housing in January. He was inquiring about any of the new developments that had duplexes in the hopes that were senior subsidized, and he could get on the waiting list, but they were all filled. City council denied the letter of support on favor of twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. However, after discussion with the developer, it determined that certain council members might be in favor of supporting letter, and it was requested to be brought back before the council, before another round of review. Due to the timeline requirements, the abode grant letters have already been signed. If the council is in support of the signed letters, there is no further action needed by the council, only a motion in favor of supporting the grant. If the council decides they are against the grant, they will, the city will call the state chamber of commerce law first and let them know that the city is not in favor of the abode grant. So the city council is considering if they want to support the abode grant. There's no cost to the city. The grant would be for two million to build apartment complexes in Star Bond Genesis Development Area. This letter does not guarantee the grant, only shows support or favor in the abode. So this is a concept that shows if, when you were born, if you were born at a certain time, do you qualify as fifty-five and over for the county? So if you were born January first, nineteen sixty-eight, or any date before then, you are fifty-five and over. And that is considered senior according to the county. General analytics show that we have about maybe one thousand one hundred thirty qualified residents based on age, not, not on income, it's just based on age. This doesn't take into account the surrounding area. This is just for Goddard. Fast financially known, legally it's approved as the form. It's recommended city council has three options: motion to support the letter for the abode grant, motion to not support the letter for the abode grant, or three tabled as denied. So we do have Rodney here supporting that. If you have any questions for the developer?
Yeah. So can I start on this one? So during the last meeting when we went over this, I was, I voted against it and was very against it, but the reason that I was against it was location. And that was, I asked the representative multiple times if there were any other options, and he wasn't able to give me a clear answer. And that created enough uneasiness in me that I felt like that was not something I was comfortable moving forward with. So the next day, Mr. Stevens and I were able to have a conversation, and, and as far as I understand from our conversation, there was multiple options that you would be looking at for the location. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that was, that was really, after Rodney and I were able to talk, I was the one who, who called our city attorney and talked to him. And, and I think senior housing would be great. I think that it's something that we need, but I was, I was just very against the, putting it in the star bond where it was being shown that it would be put. So I just wanted to be fully transparent about why I called and why I changed my vote on that. So unless you guys have anything else, any further discussion, I'm willing to make the motion.
Sarah, do I know you had concerns?
So the area where you're, is it outside of the Genesis Development Area, or is it in that area?
We're open to any place in the area, and we've applied to try to get the grant, but, you know, we have a long process for that to happen. And if it does get to happen, we get to come in front of the planning commission and decide what's the best area for it.
I mean, by supporting the letter, you're not committing to anything, you know, with regard to location for the project, anything like that. And you're just expressing your support that, hey, if Mr. Stevens is able to get this funding and a project could be realized, we'd support doing that here in Goddard. So, so after, after Keating called me and expressed a desire to change his vote, that coupled with Aubrey and Brent voting in favor of the letter of the last meeting, created a majority. Given the timing of everything, the deadline to submit the application was, I think, end of month, and we weren't scheduled to meet until today. So it was, that was my call to direct that the letter be signed and sent, and then we come back and seek to ratify it here tonight. And of course, obviously, I'm not here.
So do I have a motion to approve?
I'll motion to support the letter for the abode grant.
I second.
Motion in a second. All on favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Very good. Motion passes.
Thank you for clarifying. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm a mayor and council. Item H four is for your consideration of a vehicle purchase for Public Works. Public Works vehicle replacement program strives to replace pickups on a seven to ten year schedule. Life span of some trucks depends on, is longer depending on the type of vehicle it's used. For instance, specialized vehicles such as the bucket truck are older and they have higher miles, but they are especially used, so we don't have any plans to replace them at this time. The trucks that are primarily used for daily waste within that ten-year timeframe. Down here is a list of some of the vehicles we have. You'll notice we have a year two thousand Chevy. It's very old. It's one of the old red ones. We, we use it for Brian applications, so we don't get sold on the new trucks cause rust. And then we have other trucks all the way to our new twenty-three GMC. Recent purchases include two fully outfitted Dodge Rams purchased in twenty twenty, and a new outfitted GMC thirty-five hundred HD purchased in twenty twenty-two. The rest of the fleet is purchased prior to twenty eighteen. Some vehicles are nearly twenty years old. The replacement schedule calls for pickup purchase in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-five. Purchase of a new pickup allows Public Works to continue moving forward with updating and renewing our fleet in accordance with the departmental replacement schedule, and assures our work trucks are safe and reliable. We're requesting to purchase a twenty twenty-three Chevy Silverado fifteen hundred four-wheel drive pickup that includes a light package. It will replace the twenty fourteen Chevy Tahoe currently driven by myself. The twenty fourteen Tahoe was originally a police vehicle, was transitioned to Public Works when it was removed from their fleet. It is still a good solid vehicle, and if we purchase this one, we plan to service it and hand it down to the new inspector position in community development. Financials, below is the cost of what be associated with purchasing outfitting of the vehicle. The, that's incorrect, that's a twenty-three, so my apology on that. The twenty twenty-three GMC. Okay, that's incorrect. My apology. That was not a thought. The twenty twenty-three Chevrolet fifteen hundred is forty-seven, six, twenty-three. The upfitting of light barn strobes is eighty-seven, twelve. Total cost for the vehicle would be fifty-six, three thirty-five, forty-eight. It would be allocated to eighty-one, eight thirty, eighty-two, ten, which is equipment reserved for Public Works operations vehicles. Any questions?
I guess my comment is, one of the things Travis, you brought up, how long it's going to take to get a new city administrator, one of my main things that I want to try to get done before we fire that individual is make sure all of our departments have the equipment they need before a new person comes on, so they're not getting. before a new person comes on, so they're not getting asked questions, hey, can I get this, hey, can I get that? And I want them to have the staff that they need. And so I think it's important to have research work with Public Works and Brooke and get them what they need.
I make a motion to approve the truck purchase.
Motion by. Brent?
It's, it's already been budgeted, right?
Yeah, this will be purchased out of the equipment reserve fund, which is not a budgeted fund, and we have, uh, sufficient fund balance. Part of our last capital improvement, uh, budget is when we put that 2023, 2025 year for purchase in. The only, I mean, initially, I don't believe we were planning to, uh, we were planning to replace one of the other vehicles, not the, uh, the records vehicle, but, um, because we have to provide a vehicle for the new building inspector, his vehicle is the perfect option for that instead of having to go spend a new Tahoe or another SUV. Besides, he's been driving his own vehicle for a while, so I think he should get a new vehicle before we get a new one for that new position. But I anticipate replacing that Tahoe sometime in the next two to three years anyway, so this is just, and, and we have a, we have an opportunity to create a vehicle right now, which has not been the case for, I think, chief is still waiting for two vehicles for last year, and I've mentioned his vehicle purchases for this year. So if we had the opportunity to get that vehicle, we want to get it now while we, while we can.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And that, just so I'd let you know, that vehicle is a white, is a same exact pickup that the police farm bought, just in a different color scheme.
Um, item H. five is wastewater treatment plant ultraviolet system repairs. A fluid disinfection is final step in the wastewater treatment process. Disinfection reduces and destroys a bacteria, virus, and protozoa populations in the affluent prior to discharging, discharging into the receiving body of water. It is critical to protect protection of the public health and the environment. Um, at the city's wastewater treatment facility, final disinfection is achieved using ultraviolet light technology. The UV light provides a rapid effective inactivation of microorganisms through a physical process. When the bacteria, viruses, and protozoa are exposed to germicidal wavelengths of the UV light, they're instantly rendered incapable of reproducing and infecting. UV is commonly used and is an effective, safe, and environmentally friendly way to disinfect water. The UV system at the wastewater treatment plant contains two treatment vessels, um, obviously labeled vessel one and two. The system is designed to transition affluent flow between the two vessels every 24 hours. The transition allows the vessel's components to cool between uses and tend, extending the life of the bulbs and the other components in the vessels. Over the past several months, um, the system has not been automatically switching from one vessel to the other. And the intensity sensors are starting to give us some, some false readings showing low intensity when we actually have adequate intensity. And interesting thing about that, when we have that, our automatic valves that release that affluent won't open. Cause it's not showing inadequate disinfection, even though our lab results are showing adequate disinfection. Um, city staff has attempted to repair the system, but we're at a recent limit of our knowledge. Um, right now, we're at a point where we require assistance, assistance from the system manufacturer, which is Xylem Water Solutions USA. They recommend an onsite service call to diagnose and repair the system. The visit will require multi-day onsite maintenance call and the possible replacement of several UV system parts. Um, Xylem is confident the system can be repaired to function properly during the service call. Here's a little, here's a picture of the two vessels. You'll see the, the affluent runs in, well, it'll be affluent by this point, it is treated by the bulbs, and then it runs out. We have vessel one and vessel two. Cost of the service call and the projected parts is $17,234. The expenditure would be allocated 100% to 81, 860, 6130, which is sewer reserve fund, repair, and maintenance. Any questions?
God, didn't we just replace one of these like three years ago?
We did a rebuild on one of the vessels two years ago, which was, was new quartz sleeves, new bulbs, and new wipers. And that's something that, you know, periodically has to be done. Um, they were functioning fine, and this is likely a controls issue, possibly connections with some of the wiring and whatnot in the, in the KLC, and that's just, just beyond our knowledge. We need to get the, the techs in there and work on it.
So this is to do both of them?
This will be to troubleshoot both of them and make sure they are running properly. This is, this is, and any replacement parts to do so, this is not a complete rebuild of the systems.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
Only the motion to approve hiring Xylem Water Solutions USA to repair the wastewater treatment plant UV system in the amount of $17,234.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Brent, all in favor say aye.
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 Now, one more item for you here. H. six is your consideration of a dump trailer purchase. The city's 1997 international dump truck was sold in late 2022 due to a worn-out engine and dump drive train. That was a truck we bought used from KDOT, and we still had over 185,000 miles on it, got some use out of it. Uh, the remaining 92 Ford L800 dump truck is functional, but it's old, the bed has significant rust, and is, it has an inoperable tailgate. We looked all over for a new tailgate, we cannot find one, uh, making it unsuitable for hauling material on public roads. Public Works needs to purchase a new dump truck, but current supply demand crisis is making it difficult to locate a suitable replacement. Um, the lack of solid operational dump truck has made it difficult to haul materials to and from the job site. And to continue operation while searching for replacement truck, Public Works is proposing the purchase of a hydraulic dump trailer. And we solicited quotes from three manufacturers and chose the Max ID DJX Dump Trailer. It's a 2023 model, it's 16 feet long, two actual, excellent utility trailer with a payload capacity of just over 10,000 pounds, and it uses a hydraulic lift for loading and dump, for unloading and dumping loads. Um, can be towed by any of the, the department's fleet of six one-ton trucks. We use the haul spoils and front and material to the job site. Um, here's a picture of the exact trailer here, pretty, pretty basic. Um, financials, we're requesting pending approval to purchase the 2023 DJX Dump Trailer from Open Range Sales and Service. Cost of the trailer is $15,082.25. That will be allocated 100% to 81, 430, 8220, equipment reserve, heavy equipment. Any questions?
You said you're actively looking for a new truck?
We are, we, we have been for a while.
Yeah.
And last spring, we went to a dealership, and they had a great truck, perfect for the city, outfitted with everything we needed. Price was right, I said, okay, get us a quote, let's go to council. And he laughed at me and said, now come back in the fall, we'll see if we can order you one. Come back in the fall, we sit down across the table from the salesman, and he had a lost look in his eyes, because they can't order anything. It's either real massive trucks, which is way too large for why you'd be too expensive, or little tiny ones that are very expensive for what you get.
Yeah.
So we've chosen to go.
You'll still use this trailer.
Oh, I know, the trailer will always be used, even if once we get a truck, it will still be used. It actually allows us to do local jobs at one time.
That was my only question was, are we allowed to spend $15,000 on something we use for two months?
Yeah, no, it's, 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 it's someone to stop them, but it will still be a good piece of equipment that we use. And, and the trailer is kind of nice compared to a big dump truck, depending on where you're working, you can poke it in there and, and use it, so it will still get used, yes.
Any more questions?
No, I'm all for dump trailers.
Ah.
Good go.
Do I have a motion?
I'll motion to approve purchasing a 2023, oh, I can't say that, MXXD DJX Dump Trailer in the amount of $15,082.25.
Motion by Keaton.
Second.
Second by Brent, all in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Um, Ron, before you start, can we go back to the libraries?
Yeah. I was going to, we're wanting to.
We're gonna, we skipped the library.
Oh, yeah.
Because I would rather do that.
Fair enough, come on.
Uh, we, we skipped to come back to you.
You're up.
Yeah, we waited for you.
For the appointment of the library board.
Is there anything that you want to say? Other than.
She was at our meeting tonight.
You're happy with her?
Yes, very happy.
You have no, you don't want to express any concerns, you're good, we're good to go.
No, I have no concerns.
Okay, well, okay, well then.
I'll make a motion to approve Megan Kenning to the library board.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Keaton, all in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, Andrew.
Honorable mayor and council, I'm a little jealous of, uh, Brent. I'm not here asking for money to spend on any cool new equipment or toys.
Could you use a dump truck at the law office?
Yeah, one of our partners is a bit of a packer. Well, I, I've been threatening to start a bonfire out in town square with his files, so.
Yeah, but you have, how much was that dump truck?
Fifteen.
The trailer?
No, the dump truck, how much would it have been?
Was 180.
There you go. We look how much money we just saved.
Thank you, Spiey.
Um, last couple of meetings, we've talked about the process for recruiting a new city administrator. Um, I know that Mr. Bryant mentioned the possibility of posting the job internally, looking at internal candidates, trying to identify, uh, even outside candidates, um, without the use of a, uh, executive search firm. That's certainly within your prerogative. I mean, this is, the process is going to look the way you guys want it to look. Here, um, you directed me at the last meeting to go ahead and prepare a draft of a request for proposal and what that might look like. I did that, um, it's included in your agenda packets. Uh, you know, what it's going to cost for a search firm, you know? Good estimate that you're going to spend a third of the salary of, of, uh, the position. That's what a lot of bigger firms would charge. I do think that there are some specialty folks in this area that it would not charge, uh, it would not cost that much. But obviously, we're not going to know when the proposals come in the door. So, what would you guys like to do?
If we RFP it and we get proposals and we say, well, we don't want to spend, say, the lowest one $70,000, and we say nope.
We can reject them all.
Then we just, then we can.
Yeah, man.
Okay.
Is there, is there a clause in the agreement with the headhunter that if we were to hypothetically find our own internally, that they're not entitled in compensation or anything like that?
That would probably depend on whatever terms the search firms would propose to the city and what their standard contract might look like. I speculate at this point. Uh, my guess is that they would still expect to receive some sort of compensation for the actual time and, and expenses expended as part of the search. But I don't know that until we get those proposals.
Doing this, just my two cents, doing this all the time, you just tell them it's a, I'm saying, I'm saying dual pathing. Put the posting out there, start looking for it internally, go RFP it, RFP I ever do. It's all based on, it's X percent of their first year's total compensation. So if they hire somebody, it's, if you hire somebody 150, it's 30%, it's $50,000. Once that person starts, you have up to 30 days to make that payment, they're usually, they're usually giving you a 90-day guarantee. If that person leaves after 90 days, sorry, you lose your $50,000. My proposal is just go put it out there, see what you get, dual pathing, and always have the right as an employer to tell that search firm, hey, I found my person, thank you, but, you know. I did, I, that's why I don't know why we're just not dual pathing. I don't think we should just give up and go straight RFP, but I do think you need to have somebody on the back burner coming in in case 30, 45 days from now, you look at your candidates that have applied, and you have zero worthy candidates. But don't just give up and say, we're just going to go spend 50 grand without knowing whether you have somebody internally or externally that's, that doesn't have.
I mean, I, I don't, so just so you know Travis, this wasn't like to make a decision tonight, this was.
This is continuing the dialogue.
So, so this one, okay, we're going to go ahead and do this one direction. This is, the reason why we're choosing to do it this way is so we can have input from people like you to say what you want and to tell us what type of direction is. Because we don't, we don't have anybody in mind. And I know people have already, people have already reached out to me, but I don't want to be advocating for one particular person because that might hurt that candidate.
But that's why if you put the posting out there, then those people that are reaching out, you can instruct them to, hey, go to Kansas Gov to apply, find a job, apply for it.
Right.
And then we'll follow due process once you go apply.
I agree, but we need to have that conversation, an open session, so everybody hears what the plan is, because people want transparency, so we got to give them that too. So, I mean, I guess.
So basically, this RFP is, we would put that out there. They would come to us with their proposals, it'll cost this much, this is what we do, blah, blah, blah.
Right.
Then we meet and we say, this is what we want.
Right, you go over the proposals, you pick one, or you reject all of them, you don't like all, any of them. You pick one, you then enter into a contract with that firm, and you move forward.
And you say this, and we tell them what we want.
Yep.
I mean, what I've tried to do is I've tried to lay out, maybe some basic structure and expectations, so that the search firm would have a general idea of what we think the process should look like, so that they can make an informed, uh, bid. Now, I would fully expect, once a firm comes in, you know, they would send somebody in here to, you know, visit with you all in open session, just like this, get, you know, your take on what you think you're looking for, what does that candidate profile look like, um, what do you want your involvement and participation to be, those sorts of things. But what I've tried to do is outline, at least in broad strokes, what I envision you all are wanting from this process.
Aubrey told me, since he can't be here tonight, he wanted me to make the point for him that he wants somebody to be involved locally. Um, he's aware of a firm here locally that has, I guess, spoken to him. He thinks that having a local voice trying to find somebody also gives some value for knowing all of the character veterans by here in the community, so he wanted me to bring that up.
Brent? You have Brent and Daisy?
Man, I tell you what, Penny Power closed down a long time ago. I'm, I'm just, you don't remember Penny Power, right? Well, that's the old ones too.
What is, Brent, what do you, what do you see? I mean, what, what do you want to see happen?
I just think that sounds, sounds expensive to me. Hire a company like that, that's ridiculous. Uh, can we not reach out to Wichita State?
Well, and there's organizations like the League of Municipalities.
You can go through, I mean, the, the League of Municipalities offers a service, but they're not going to be very aggressive. They're not going to tap on the shoulders of anybody who's in an existing job with a municipality. Um, but, I mean, they provide a relatively inexpensive service. Um, I mean, you can, you can do your own deal by marketing and advertising it, you know, putting, uh, putting your ads out on Indeed and government.com, you know, those sorts of places. Uh, but you're not going to have the expertise of somebody who does this on a daily basis.
Could we kind of like what Travis has do both, start now, getting people from outside?
Yeah.
And then getting quotes from, maybe you brought up one from Hutch, right?
Yeah, there's a guy up at Hutch.
And then Aubrey brought up the local firm of. And then Aubrey brought up the local firm, I believe it's Gregory Firm. I'm not familiar with them, but maybe get some other quotes from.
I think the one thing that's going to be very important, if you're going to use a recruiter, hiring for a municipal position is very, 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 very different than hiring for a private employer. The dynamics are different, the procedures, the bureaucracy that is involved. It's just a different deal. And so, having a recruiter who has experience in identifying successful candidates and retaining those candidates, I think is going to be important. And somebody, quite honestly, who has connections in the municipal arena in Kansas would be helpful. I, I think it would be helpful to be able to reach out and tap on the shoulders of people who are in sitting positions elsewhere. Hey, do you have any interest in God? If so, let's talk. If not, no worries. But I thought about it.
Real quick, Russ was wanting to say something.
I hear what you guys are saying. You're, you're stuck on how? Do you know what you're hiring? How far down the buddy trail are you in the requirements of what you want your city administrator to be? Do we know that?
That's a very good point, Russ. I think, and so through that process, the council needs to sit down together and fine tune because I do want the city administrator's position to look different than what it was before.
Well, we got rid of the city administrator for, for reasons. We're not all previous to all of that, and I understand that, and I support that, I get it. We need to be able to clearly understand what that is. From a business standpoint, I'd love to be an advisor to that process. There's plenty of people in business who want to work with the city administrator to help them be a better city administrator. If we can have input to that, to what we're hiring, that helps you to identify who we're hiring. And then, I think this is all things that we can do before you even bring in or concurrently as you're bringing somebody in to help with the how do we hire them.
Could we schedule like a workshop?
Yeah, could we get, because I do think it'd be great to have people like Russ and Travis and, you know, other people, planning commission, school board could even be involved in some aspects. And making sure that the whole community comes together and says, this is what we want. Because realistically, this person is going to be around for a while. You know, whether the people up here are around for a while or not, the city administrator is going to be, and their day-to-day job is so important and so vital in our community, so I want to make sure our community is involved in that process. So what would that look like?
We, we can do whatever you guys want to do. I mean, that, that's the thing, there's no sad cookie.
Technically, you would host a pretty much town hall or a special meeting as that's the topic of discussion. And you pretty much open it up for the community, you know, like Ross Travis, other business owners, other concerned citizens, and Goddard that can express their opinions and what they would like to see changed. And then, we're still working on the process. We take those, those comments into consideration and then give it to either a possible headhunter or one of the new candidates.
So, is it, how would you guys feel about sending out the RFP but scheduling a workshop? Planning Commission meets Monday, the 13th. So like, can we schedule a workshop for like the 16th and do a community thing and?
I'll just tell you that anytime you send out a RFP to a headhunter, the first thing they're going to ask was what's the job description?
Right, and the RFP, what?
They're going to want that though. They're going to say, in order for me to RFP, I need to know what you want me to hire for. So I think you're.
Right, and that's highlighted in the RFP.
We have one of these here.
Well, and that's what Russ was talking about. That's your, what are you hiring? If that's already a RFP, then you already know what you're hiring for.
Okay.
Yeah, but I think we could refine what exactly, because then when we, when we hire someone, when we choose somebody, choose that under, then I think it'd be good to say, okay, this is, we've talked to the community, this is a more refined version of exactly what we want.
Don't be afraid to go steal and, I mean, I went on the internet two weeks ago and City of Olathe has a city manager, the city of, like Ottawa, has a city administrator. Go steal some job descriptions that are out there in the local cities and look at their job description. You don't have to go recreate the wheel. Go look out there and put three or four together and say, I like this from this, this from this.
We call it borrowing in the legal frame.
We call it asking a photo friend. You know.
Wouldn't you want to do that before you do that? Well, in, like what Travis is saying.
We need to call this to point of order to a city council meeting.
Sorry.
This is a meeting, it's not a public forum.
Okay, that would be the other thing.
I think the four of you have got to decide.
Well, that, that's, I think we, what we need is apparently we need some input. We need some injection from the community so we can have, not Terry Yell and ask me right now.
I kind of think that we need to have dual action.
But we need to at least keep. Yeah, we need to, here's the problem is, we need to at least move forward. So, what we need to do is we need to probably open it up for candidates. We will refine it, all right? We have, we have a job description right now, but then we talk to the headhunters and get quotes from what they're going to cost. Because we can't commit to any headhunters. And we just, if it's going to cost $150,000, I'm not very interested in doing a headhunter either. So, you've given me rough quotes from a lot smaller figures and if it's around those, I'd be more interested in maybe getting more candidates from outside the state. And so.
So what are you proposing?
I'm proposing that we send it out to a headhunter, get quotes, but then we also schedule, is the 16th okay? Hey, can you, so Russ, so Terry Yell.
Your wife's saying no.
Us people, of what date works.
I'm good with the 16th.
Ryan has not.
Okay. Next week's pretty great.
What about the 8th or the 15th?
You said that.
8th is in two days.
Yeah.
Uh, I can't do that.
What about the 15th?
That's when I'm leaving town.
That week's pretty much shot for me. Because I've been in positions before.
Can we do it at?
Well, what's stopping us from doing it the week after? And maybe we might get quotes from headhunters by then.
Do it at like 6 o'clock on the 20th? Before our regular meeting?
Yeah, that's.
Is, is one hour long enough?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it's important, the four of you and Aubrey have got to give thought before then, what, what do you want the position to look like? What, how do you envision it being the same, being different than what it has been historically? And you need to be able to articulate that and discuss that at that workshop and share that with the general public and take their feedback and ideas. And then from there, try to finalize at least a vision of a description that you want.
The only thing that I, I've already said that I would like to see changed is lay out a timeframe. If a community member or somebody wants something presented to the governing body, they have X amount of days.
That's a, that's more of a policy than a job description issue. A policy and expectation, performance expectation.
Stop taking steps to somewhat address that.
Yeah.
I don't know if you noticed, there's a weekly report included in your correspondence last week. We are planning to provide that weekly, even on off agenda weeks. So, the idea being that any contact we have with the outside citizen will be included in that plus our any normal updates we could keep up, should be fair to them.
I mean, the thing that you typically have in a job description, what, what will this individual's duties be? What will they expect, be expected to do on a day-to-day basis? Who will they report to? Who will they supervise? What are the job requirements? You know? Do you want a different degree? Do you want, I mean, those are the types of things that you've got to think about in terms of a job description. You know, in terms of changing policies or expectations, that generally doesn't necessarily need to be in a job description unless the expectations really go to the day-to-day and what the individual is doing so that they.
Job description's already laid out.
Pardon me?
The job description's pretty much already laid out.
Well, it's fourth in the charter ordinance.
Couldn't you just ask a fellow city manager to help us out? What we, what we need, what we all need for the city.
Well, the job description that you have is pretty consistent with what all of the surrounding.
I just heard the business has a really good one.
Are we clear with mud?
Well, I think what I'm hearing is you want to schedule a workshop before the next council meeting in order to discuss any potential changes, ideas, what, what are you wanting in the way of a job description? Do you want the same thing? Do you want something different?
Okay, well, let's do that.
Okay.
We'll get it on.
Fair enough. All right.
Thank you. So we agreed 20th, 6 o'clock, just so everybody knows.
Yep, got it.
Same as you.
My last agenda item. We talked about this a couple of meetings ago. You know, I think there, there's been a lot of discussion in the, in the community and the media with regard to open meetings. I think there, you know, I've, I've looked through the social media comments, I've read the editorials online. I think there is some misunderstandings of what the Kansas Open Meetings Act requires, what it doesn't require. And so, and given that we have two new council members, Auburn's not here, it's also a good time to just do a refresher on the Open Meetings Act and it's something that we have done periodically in the past as the need arises. And so, I offered to do a presentation on what the coma requires. And so that's what we're here to do today. So, the public policy of coma is that meetings shall be open to the public because a representative government is dependent upon an informed elected director. Transparency. We all want transparency from our elected leaders, at least as much as is reasonably possible. And there are two primary laws in the state of Kansas that go to that public policy. One is the Open Meetings Act. The other is the Open Records Act, which makes most public records available to the general public. They just have to ask for it. So who is subject to coma? The statute says that it applies to all legislative and administrative bodies, state agencies, and political and taxing subdivisions that receive, expend, or are supported in whole or in part by public funds. So, the Attorney General's Office has taken the position that coma applies to governing bodies in municipalities. So it applies to you, it applies to the planning commission, it applies to any other advisory board that you might create that is essentially performing a delegated function for all of you. It doesn't apply to city staff meetings. So if Matt and Micah and Brent and Lance get together to talk about city business, that doesn't trigger any open meetings requirements. Just the governing bodies. So, the definition of a meeting, okay? What actually triggers application of coma? Under the statute, a meeting requires interactive communication. There's got to be a back and forth. Discussion of city business or affairs. And it involves a majority of the members of the public body. Okay? So, as an example, periodically, I will send all five of you a, an email update on something that maybe you've asked me to monitor or maybe there's a development that involves the city. It's an FYI email. I specifically tell you guys, this isn't for discussion here. Don't respond substantively. Okay? That's okay. It's not an interactive communication. It's not intending to be a back and forth between you all. If you go to a social event and all five of you are there, that's okay. So long as you're not talking city business. Okay? You can be in the same room together. You can attend the same functions. You just, a majority of you can't be involved in an interactive discussion about city affairs without triggering the requirements under coma. So what is interactive communication? It can be in person, it can be telephone calls, it can be emails, text messages, any other means of communication. I even saw, there was reference to a, I think it was an attorney general opinion here within the last couple of years suggesting that posting on social media can even trigger the statute to the extent that you all, a majority of you, are posting online and essentially communicating with each other regarding a matter of city interest. And so, you have to be cognizant when you're out communicating about city business. If any, if more than two of you are involved, you've got to ask yourself, okay, hey, is this a scenario under which coma might get triggered? Okay? So you got to be careful when you're posting online. You can't poll the governing body by third parties. You can't, Keaton can't ask me, hey, here's where I'm at on this position. Can you call Brent and Hunter and Sarah and Aubrey? Find out if we have a majority? No, I can't do that. It's okay if two of you talk together and, hey, here's where we're at on this. You can't go poll a third. Okay? Buddies are okay, groups are not. Yeah, back and forth posts on social media, talked about that. A single informative email sent to the governing body, like if I send you, hey, FYI, you know, we had a police shooting or, you know, this is something that's happened that, that you all may want to be aware of. That doesn't trigger open meetings, so long as it's not an interactive communication. Serial meetings are prohibited, so that's kind of like the polling that we were talking about. You can't play a game of telephone where, you know, well, Brent called me and I talked to Keaton and I know you two are on the same page. And, hey, Sarah, I talked to Brent and, and Keaton, they're supportive of this measure. Are you supportive too? You can't do that. So, a serial meeting would be triggered if, again, you collectively involve a majority of the public body, involves a common topic. And really, it's intended to try and reach consensus or an agreement outside the presence of an open meeting, probably not a summer meeting. Discussion of city business, it doesn't have to be something that necessarily requires a vote. Doesn't have to be something that necessarily requires binding action. If three of you get together talking about something of interest to the city, whether you're expecting to take action on it or not, that can trigger coma. Social gatherings, as I said, they don't trigger as long as there's not a majority of you talking about city business. So one or two of you talking together, that's good. That's okay. Okay? Three of you get together, not good. Five, four, five, not good. Okay? In order to notice up a meeting, all that you're required to do under coma is to notice up the date, time, and place of any regular or special meeting. You've got to provide that notice to anybody who has affirmatively requested it from the city. Okay? There is no formal requirement to just give notice to the general public. Somebody has to have affirmatively requested, hey, I'd like notice of any public meetings. And if they do that, then you've got an obligation to send that notice. Doesn't require meeting notices to be published in a newspaper. Doesn't require them to be posted on the website. Now, we do, as a general practice, post the meeting notices and the agenda packets on the website. I think this, this meeting, when was it on the website? Wednesday, Thursday, at the latest?
Thursday.
We're well in advance of other communities in the metro area, I can tell you. So there's plenty of notice there. But there's no, there's no requirement as far as the timeframe. If something urgent comes up and we decide, you know what? We need to have a special meeting in an hour? We can have a special meeting in an hour. We've just got to blast out notice to those people who have requested to be notified. That's it. There's no agenda requirement. There's no requirement to keep minutes, except with regard to when you go into executive session. You don't actually keep minutes of what's discussed in executive session, but you've got to keep minutes reflecting when you go, what was the stated basis of executive session? How long? Those things. But the Attorney General has recommended, even though an agenda is not required, if you do create one, it should list the topics that are going to be discussed and that should be available to anybody who requests a copy. Agendas can be admitted, amended at any time, even during a meeting. It's not something that should happen as a regular course of practice and it certainly shouldn't be something that is done to try and limit notice, but it can be done and we've done it over the years. No minutes required, except to record a motion. We talked about that. Public participation. There's no right to speak or participate in a meeting under coma. I mean, we certainly offer a citizen comments section early in the meeting. It's not required, certainly good practice, though. But beyond that, there's not any right to engage in an interactive dialogue at these meetings. Hence Terry getting mad at us. But the whole idea is the public's entitled to observe and listen to your opening meetings. They're entitled to know what you're talking about and how you're making this, your decisions, why you're making your decisions the way you are. There's no secret ballot voting. If, you know, if binding action has to be taken, it's got to be taken on the bench in front of everybody. Cameras, recording devices generally allowed. We obviously broadcast on Facebook Live. So our meetings are broadcast live on Facebook. They're there, recorded for anybody who wants to go back and watch them. Executive session. Okay? So this is the exception to doing things out in the open. The general rule is we conduct our business in open session. But there are limited occasions where it is permissible to go into executive session in order to talk privately about certain topics. Okay? There's the exception to the rule. And executive sessions are closed to the public. They're closed to anybody who you don't invite or want in those executive sessions. And generally speaking, what's said in executive session stays in executive session. It's intended to allow a very, a frank dialogue to talk about things that potentially for legal reasons, for personal privacy reasons, may need to be discussed in private as opposed to out in public. So in order to go into executive session, you first have to convene an open meeting. Then you've got to make a motion in an open meeting to go into executive session. And that, that, that motion has to identify the subject that's going to be discussed, the statutory justification for the closed session, and the time and place when the open meeting is going to resume. And we'll have a couple of examples here in just a little bit whenever we go into executive session. We've talked about this before. No binding action can be taken in executive session. It is permissible to discuss and achieve a consensus on a topic in executive session, but you can't take binding action. In order to take binding action, you then have to come out and you've got to publicly vote. And you've got to tell the general public what you're voting on and how you're voting. And you can't talk about other subjects dismiss, uh, should be discussed in executive session. So if we go into executive session to talk about non-elected personnel, that's the stated reason for going into executive session. We can't, while we're in there, talk about something else. Okay? We can't talk about a potential real estate deal. We can't talk about a potential claim or pending litigation involving the city. If we want to go back in there to talk about another topic that we didn't previously identify, then we come out, we make a motion to go right back into executive session for purposes of discussing something else, so long as it is, falls within one of the covered exemptions. Okay? So like I said, not everything can be discussed in the executive session. There are really only a handful of topics that are permissible for executive session. Personnel matters of non-elected personnel. I think that seems pretty obvious. Your rank and file employees, they're not public officials. They weren't elected to their positions. They have certain privacy interests that they may want to be protected, that the city may want to protect. And the general public may want to know what's going on with a, a non-elected personnel and their personnel actions, but they're not generally entitled to that. And so that's why we go into executive session to talk about personnel matters involving non-elected personnel. Attorney-client privilege discussions. So if we need to go into, if we need to discuss, you need to seek legal advice from me, or I want to provide legal advice to you on a particular topic. We enjoy attorney-client privilege. That privilege is confidentiality. What you tell me, I can never disclose without your permission. What I tell you, what I advise you, you can't be forced to disclose without your consent. Okay? And so the attorney-client relationship is predicated in large part on trust and confidentiality. And that is not something that I, as a lawyer, take lightly. And we have to be able to have a very frank conversation about difficult topics from time to time. You expect me to tell you the good, the bad, and the really ugly. Okay? But you're not going to want me to tell you that out here in open session for everybody to hear, for potentially an opposing party to hear and use and try and strategize against us. And so that's another reason why we can go into executive session, is to protect attorney-client privilege. Employer-employee negotiations. We don't have any labor unions, but if we did, you could handle those in, in, in the executive session. Discussion of third-party financial affairs or trade secrets? So let's suppose that a developer is seeking financial incentives from the city. The city obviously wants to understand, well, what is being proposed? What do your forecasts look like? What kind of returns do you expect from this project? How can you justify asking the city for money? Well, anybody in business is not going to open their books for the general public to see. Sorry. And they're certainly not going to show their secret sauce to the general public, to potentially their competitors. But to the extent they share that information with the city, those discussions can be held in executive session. But I'll tell you what, what rises to the level of a trade seeker is a pretty, pretty narrow definition, far narrower than most people think. Preliminary discussion related to acquisition of real property. If you've got an idea of, hey, we want to acquire property for community center, for a road, for whatever. And you want to have discussions about approaching the owner, making an offer to the owner, you can have those preliminary conversations in the executive session. Because if you do it out here, you're losing any leverage. It's not going to be a fair transaction, I can tell you that. Security measures. So if Lance were to put together a security plan for City Hall that he wants to review with you, those conversations can take place in executive session. There are some other topics as well, but they mostly don't apply to municipalities. But those six things, those are generally what everything falls under. I don't think we've gone into executive session since I've been working with you for the last 12, 13 years, whatever, that didn't involve one of these topics. So if there's a screw-up, there's a violation of coma, what happens? Well, the Attorney General and the District Attorney's Office are the parties responsible for investigating and enforcing coma violations. The law's pretty clear. It doesn't require that you knew it was a violation. So long as you intended to do the act which itself was a violation, that's the only intent that's required. Okay? The penalty, it's a civil penalty, it's not a criminal deal. It's a civil penalty up to $500 for each violation. And the civil penalty is not assessed against the city. It's assessed against the violator individually for each violation up to $500. The statute also gives the AG and the DA the ability to seek, to avoid any decisions that may have been made based on a violation. So if you go into executive session, you take binding action in, in executive session and then fail to come out here and take that public vote, the AG, the DA, they could pursue trying to invalidate whatever action was ultimately taken. That's coma in a nutshell in 15 minutes. So you guys have any questions? Concerns? I know that was exciting. But, but I think it was a good, I think it's something that if you was governing body members, you need to understand and know. I think it is good to periodically do a refresher on that. You know, if you don't have any prior experience on a governing body, then you don't fully understand and appreciate how different it is to make decisions on behalf of a public agency as opposed to private interests. So, all right. Is there any question? Good? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan.
Okay. I'm inch nine.
Good evening. Kevin Cowan with Gilmoreville City Council. I'm going to apologize in advance. I know the meeting's been long and this is very technical stuff we're going to be talking about. So as you are aware, late in 2022, the city issued its industrial revenue bonds to finance the costs of the Genesis Sports projects. And primarily, the bonds were for state lawn centers. Partial property tax abatement on some of the facilities, a sales tax exemption. So those bonds were issued and the structure of the bonds is that the company, Goddard Sports LLC leases real property to the city. The city issued bonds. They leased everything back to the company. And then over time, the company is required to make lease payments that are sufficient to service the debt of the bonds. In this case, Goddard Sports bought those bonds. So they owe themselves money. It's, they would make a lease payment theoretically to the city. The city has assigned all of its interest to the security bank as the fiscal agent and then get the money back. Friday afternoon, I received an email and had a phone call that with respect to property in the southwest part of that parcel or some of the sand sport, there is a proposed loan with a mortgage to finance the restaurant, sports bar portion of that. The bank did a title search and found this property's subject to lease leases under the IRB documents and we want, as the bank, to be first in line. We're going to be the mortgage holder. We want to have a superior lien status. And so we talked about it, had discussions with the mayor on Friday. I, I don't have any objections to that at all and would advise you to perhaps consider it the same way because the bonds were, in some respects, intended to be subordinate to everything. The company bought their own bonds. The company owes itself money. So if an actual mortgage holder is going to provide additional financing, no threat at all to the bond transactions. If there was ever a default, it's the company defaulting on itself. And so we have worked through the documents and I prepared a resolution. And what it would approve is a subordination of all of the bond documents to this, this bank and the mortgage holder. And then some assignments and assumption agreements which are ancillary. A new LLC, different LLC will own and operate the restaurant. And so because of that, we needed Goddard Sports LLC to assign its interest in the site lease and the lease that I mentioned. in the site lease and the lease that I mentioned to Goddard Six S Sports LLC, just to get everything in order. And also, this resolution would consent to Goddard Sports LLC transferring the lots that are affected, which are lots seven and eight, to Goddard Six S Sports LLC by deed. So, again, to back up sort of in a nutshell, Goddard Sports owns it now. They've leased it to the city and leased it back. To accomplish the mortgage, Goddard Sports needs to transfer by deed to Goddard Sport, or Goddard Six S Sports LLC. So they can grant a mortgage on the property, they're then the owner. And then, they'll also assume the leases and step into the place of Goddard Sports LLC with respect to the site lease and the base, or the project lease and the bond documents. So, again, very technical, some moving parts, but what the city is essentially doing is consenting to taking a step back. We'll be subordinate to banks with mortgages and things like that because we don't have that sort of bond issue here. Sometimes you'll have IRBs that, you know, a bank buys, and when that bank expects to be first in line in terms of lien priority, but that's not the case here. The company bought their own bonds, it was all for state lawn incentives. And the real financing for the restaurant is proposed to come from this bank with the mortgage. So again, consents to the various things that need to happen to get this in line to make the restaurant. It's...
Your job's on the line.
I guess in a nutshell, I know you already said the city's not going to be holding back on these orders.
No. I mean, you are, you are giving up some priority to this new bank and mortgage holder, but a couple of the parcels already have mortgages, and the bonds were done after those, and two were already subordinate to the hotel mortgage holder lien and the mortgage holder on Genesis and that authority. So, it's a good point, I don't know if that's what you were going for, but it's a good way to think about it. This parcel will be similar to the other parcels where there's a mortgage and the bank provided some financing. It's just this came later in time. And it's...
Any more questions? I think it was always understood that the city would subordinate its interest to the extent any private financing came in to facilitate the proposed project.
Yeah, I would agree. And the lease specifically says, we are subordinate to anything that would show up in the title report, called the permitted encumbrances, but that was in late December. And so, now we're just sort of adding something to it. There's going to be another bank that's superior to what else. And of course, they want to close, they wanted to close Friday. That's not going to happen, and so, soon, as soon as possible, they want to close on that.
You guys have any problem with it? Good? You going to understand?
Yeah.
It's okay, do I have a motion?
What are we making a motion for?
I'll read it. It would be a motion to approve a resolution authorized in the city of Goddard, Kansas to consent to the transfer by deed of certain property, the assignment of a certain site lease and a certain lease, and a subordination agreement, all in connection with the city's taxable industrial revenue bond, Series 2022A, Goddard Sports LLC.
You just got to say that real quick.
So, motion.
Motion by Sarah.
I'll second.
Second by Keaton. All in favor, say aye.
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 I'm staying.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mine.
I'm a mayor, City Council. This won't be a long presentation, so. So, economic presentation background, this is Janice, who gives a quick glimpse at economic information and around the city of Goddard, who's designed a stimulating conversation about market trends, helps shake the ideas and policies of city movements in the future. So this is just some snapshot of Goddard presently and some kind of economic trends looking at. Our projected population's around a few hundred, it's probably closer to 5,300 now currently. This is, like I said, a projection. Average median household income's around 214,000. We just, March just started, so everyone, if you look at mobile land records, you can look at your new appraised value of your property, it's posted now to the county website. This is our current biggest group, this is our social economic group, it's called Middleburg. It defines who they are, kind of their trends. Basically, unsurprisingly, that it's a, it's a burgeoning family. So basically, young families with kids, the median age is 36. This is the largest social economic group that we have in the city. Of that group, the largest cohort of that social economic group is females between the ages of 35 and 39. Obviously, Goddard being a very predominant school district, and a very high-quality school district. We have a lot of young families moving here to go to the school districts, that's what's really leading that, that group. Market profiles, and there's more details in there, but a lot of the market profiles kind of looks at what they like to spend their money on, what are their hobbies, activities, et cetera. A lot of them, and I read this to my wife, and she laughed because I'm 36 and she's 38, but I noticed that DIY projects was high on their list, and I have a lot of DIY projects at home. So, I always thought that was funny, and look at us, we are statistics, so. And this is Wichita Metro, so obviously, the darker areas are the concentrations of Middleburg. And this is being Wichita, we have a high concentration of Middleburg in our area. And that is it.
Not a whole lot. Angie and I have another meeting. So a couple of quick updates on the Goddard Main Street Market. We're going, we're doing it. So, we have a Facebook page, love for you guys to follow that. You can look that up, just, it's just Goddard Main Street Market, right?
Okay.
So, yeah, and I shared that into the Goddard Community Events, if that's an easier way for you to find it. We'd love for you to follow along. If you're a vendor, if you know vendors, we'd love to, that's all live, they can start registering now. So we'd love to kind of start looking. First date is June 11th, it'll be from 2:00 to 5:00, and it'll be right here on Main Street, so, super excited. And then it'll be the second Sunday of the month, 2:00 to 5:00, June, July, August, and September. And then, hopefully next year, since this is the first year, we had to, you know, start a little bit later, but we potentially open it up to do it a little bit more next summer. But we'll see how this year goes. So, yeah, we'd love to see you guys out there. And like I said, if you have any input, any suggestions, shoot me an email, I'd love to hear from you. So thank you guys for coming, thanks for sticking it out with us.
Thank you.
Um, the only thing I have is Neighbors United, the signups are ready. Angie and the Academy have gotten all that up and running. Neighbors United will be on Saturday, April 29th. It will meet at the District Stadium, and then you'll disperse to your projects. You can register now for projects, sponsors, or register your volunteers. That needs to be done by April 7th. And if you have questions, you can call the chamber, go to GoddardChamber.net or the Neighbors United Goddard Facebook page.
Okay, thank you, Sarah.
I don't know, I had some good lemonade yesterday.
Yeah?
On Sunset. Do you guys, anybody hit the lemonade stand?
I don't think I like my house.
Lemonade Gatorade, or Sunday, right?
I went to work.
Sunday, they were out. Two, two or three little boys there.
Did you buy it for them?
I stopped there twice, actually.
Oh, there you go.
The key is to do it on a Friday because the trash guys are in the neighborhood. And we learned that.
Oh, really?
Yes.
That's about it, Jen?
Brookcase with...
Okay, library, community center quotes. We're, excuse me, we're still kind of compiling both, but we will, pretty sure we'll have the library at the next meeting, and community center will depend on when those come in, and after we've looked at the finance, made a decision on what direction we need to go. Okay. Mics, Terry, mics.
Yes, so we had someone come by, the city, what was it?
Friday.
Friday.
Okay.
And these speakers currently don't go, are not hooked up to anything. So if we want sounds, send them in here, we can get the mics. They're looking at getting us a quote for having mics at the podium and at the bench.
Okay. And then, I know you and I already talked about it, the health insurance for the library. Can you just kind of talk about that generally?
Yes, so once we have a potential director for the library, we can, the city can send a check, or once we know what the cost is, we can send a check. I did speak with our attorney regarding whether we wanted a legal paper or something to give to the library stating that we are going to do that, but he suggested that we wait and, you know, we get a potential director.
Wait till the library has somebody in place. It could be they hire somebody who doesn't need health insurance. Maybe their spouse has health insurance, in which case, there isn't a need to subsidize that cost over there. Okay. All right. Well, then, I guess we need to move into executive session. Do I have a motion?
We're going to need a statement.
Here, let's, we got to, we got to do the, let's split it up, so. Okay, yeah. Because we need to go in, we need to go into separate executive sessions. One to discuss non-elected personnel matters and another involving potential contract negotiations. Which do you want to do first? Let's do the non-elected. Okay. So, that would be going to executive session for legal consultation with the city attorney regarding non-elected personnel matters, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. An executive session is required to protect the privacy interests of non-elected personnel, the attorney-client privilege, and the public interest. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Keaton.
For how long?
How long am I talking? 20 minutes. 30 minutes.
To reconvene in, what's this called? Council chambers at 9:40.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Keaton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
...
(inaudible)
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 No binding action was taken during the executive session. And so let's go back into executive session to include the city attorney, city treasurer, and community development director for legal consultation regarding potential contract negotiations with a third party, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. The executive session is necessary to protect the attorney-client privilege and the public's interest.
I found it. For how long?
How long?
Twenty minutes.
Another twenty. I'll make, I'll make the motion to go back into executive session for another 20 minutes. So we will come back to the council chambers at 10 o'clock.
Motion by Keaton.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You have to do your no binding here.
What?
Let the record show that there was...
You have to wait till 10 o'clock.
Okay.
Sorry.
I like how Terry's on it. I like it.
Really?
Lance does not agree. Lance is... Okay, go ahead.
Okay, let the record show that there was no binding action taken during the executive session.
All right. I would like to make a motion to, to direct our city attorney to dismiss the condemnation of Dean Perez-Land. The railroad.
Railroad land.
Second.
Motion by Keaton, second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Sarah, second by Brent. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.